Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Councilmember Wildon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council. Next up on the agenda is a brief summary of current events. Prior to that, I'd like to invite the council to take a moment, share a moment of silence as we, once again, our communities faced really just an unexplained loss with the loss of one of our own, Faith Moore. And just wanted to share a moment. And again, it's one of those moments when in crisis, our community really has come together. I think I'd like to ask Ron to share more about that later. But that the community came together in such a strong and passionate way is just truly one of the benefits of living here in the Valley. And I just want the Moore family to know that though they're facing the most severe and cruel trial that any parent could ever face, that they're certainly not facing that alone. And we're here as a community to support them. So if we could just take a moment of silence to give our respects. Thank you. Ron, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we said earlier in the pre-meeting, I'd like to publicly thank the community for gathering behind the family and all of the emergency responders. Our community was beyond generous. Their donations were appreciated and their hours in the heat at night are greatly appreciated. A special public thank you to Sheriff Rhodes and his team for standing up the command center, leading the search and rescue. And all the partners that I believe our police department did a good job of outlining, because I'll forget some of them, but everybody from Maricopa, Sedona, Glendale, lots of other agencies. And like I said, our police department has thanked them and sent out a list. But I'd also like to thank our staff. So Commander Dowell was our leader on this for most of it. And I got to watch him in action, and it was impressive. We are fortunate to have Commander Dowell. I did not get to work alongside Commander Braxton, who, the day that I was out there, and not in the search, but out at the sites, was out there volunteering, searching along the riverbanks, right along everybody else, and Sedona folks, and SRT, and our firefighters. Just the list goes on. Johanna, our victim's advocate, was with the family and out at the site often. And Brother, all of our firefighters. It was just impressive for me to be on the sidelines, watching all the work being done and the community's support to the Moore family. And as you said, Mayor, our prayers are still with them and our thoughts. And I just couldn't be more proud in such a trying time to be a part of this community.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on then to the brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or the city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless this specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. And council members, do we have anything to report this evening? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to the first responders and everybody. And it truly was an impressive turnout last week on that search. On a lighter note, on Sunday, I attended the Ecoin Emergency Evacuation Meeting. They have a team over in Yavapai on the other side of the mountain. They're trying to set up something here. And Chief Sutton was there. They're looking to set up a technical training for rescues and stuff for large animals that get stuck. So it should be a pretty good asset to bring over to the side of the mountain and help out Cottonwood and the Verde Valley.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other council members?
I had two brief items. I attended the quarterly meeting with the Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization. This is a group of local organizations, including the county, ADOT, Forest Service, Cloughdale, Camp Verde, Sedona, that discuss transportation planning projects and shared goals for traffic flow and patterns in the area. Updated them on the status of their Mingus, the second phase of Mingus, and then also learned a little bit more about ADOT's plans to improve Mingus up to, well, past the bridge area there, and was excited to hear that. I didn't realize that that was even in the works, so I was glad about that. Second item, Mayor, you were out there as well as councilmember Matthews and councilmember Wildon and myself for the Community Build event on Saturday, where we assembled playground equipment at the kids' park. It was a really fun, rewarding event, and I'd like to thank Ace Hardware for sending some of their volunteers, as well as the many city employees that volunteered at their time. We had representatives from IT. I know Mr. Carter was there. Also, our commander was there from the police department. Many, many fire employees were also there. And then, of course, Parks and Rec, our city manager and his wife Sandy, as well. And I was just sharing with my fellow council member that I've driven by the kids' park many times since Saturday, and it's been full of kids playing and really enjoying the equipment. So that was really neat to see, and I'm glad that they're getting use out of it. So that's all I've got. Thanks, Mayor.
Good. Thank you. It's finally a kids' park.
Right.
Yeah. Any other council members? No? All right, Mr. Corbin?
Well, I just want to piggyback on what councilmember Henry was saying about the kids' park, the build. It was a great event. Chief Sawman, I don't know if the firefighters were there because of him or if they came on their own, but we had a lot of firefighters there, including the chief, and so I'm very appreciative of that. And like she said, Commander Dowell and lots of city staff. But, you know, behind the brains behind this one was Rudy was left off. Our deputy city manager was there as well, and we appreciate that. But the brains behind that operation was Jack Till, our Parks and Rec manager. So kudos to him for making that happen and everybody who helped bring supplies, whatever it was. So thank you to that. A few other items, sir. I wanted to make sure that council and the public are aware about We Are Cottonwood Fest to celebrate the worldwide City Hall selfie day. Now, this event is to celebrate civic pride and will be held on Friday, August 13th, from 4:00 to 6:00 at the new playground in the Cottonwood Kids' Park. We'll also hold the grand opening with a ribbon cutting for the new playground equipment at 4:00 p.m. Kudos to the Chamber for helping us out with that. There will be free hot dogs and hamburgers, outdoor games for all ages, a bounce house, and fun for the whole family. PD and Fire will be there with vehicles, and there will also be raffle prizes. Come out and celebrate the civic pride. John is here, by the way. Very unusual, but our IT department heads this program. So John is the leader in this effort, so we're very appreciative of John and his team for doing that. I did want to let council and the community know, tomorrow night's airport commission meeting has been canceled. The next airport commission meeting will be on Wednesday, September 1st, at 6:00 here at the Chambers. I also needed to make sure I let council know that I will be at the Arizona Rural Policy Forum down in Sawyerita, starting tomorrow afternoon through Friday. It's one of my favorite meetings, and they talk solely about rural issues facing rural Arizona, put on by Local First. It's a great program. I happen to be one of the speakers on housing, and I'm hoping they're going to tell me. I hope it's a reverse, where they tell the panel how to do things, but there are several speakers. So we'll be taking our study down there and talking about that and some of the plans. So very excited. Also, wanted to let the community know that the Cottonwood Police Department will begin distributing its external customer satisfaction surveys, beginning in September and ending in October. There will be a myriad ways for residents and business owners to complete the surveys to include an online platform, by hand at city events and at the police department. Department employees will also provide input on operations and ways to increase organizational efficiency. Additional stakeholder support will be solicited from other city departments, nonprofits, schools, faith-based organizations, to name a few. The results of the survey will be brought and presented before council. This process will serve as a springboard for the department to renew its next five-year strategic plan in January of 2022 with approval from city council. And then I wanted to follow up on the storm event we had. This is an update from James, our senior civil engineer, who is also our floodplains manager. During the month of July 2021, the National Weather Service reported six, I think, 6.9 inches of total rainfall in the area, with half of that amount occurring during one short event on July 24th. This storm amounted to approximately one inch greater than what current storm design standards require for a 100-year, 60-minute duration storm. Needless to say, storm drains and detention systems were overwhelmed, and the city experienced widespread flooding. The Public Works crew has been working since then to clean up the mud and the debris from the streets and culverts and repair any of the city's storm drain systems that was damaged. The city has also responded to numerous concerns raised by residents in addition to the normal cleanup. If you have called Public Works about an issue with a ditch or culvert in the city right away, please rest assured that it is on the list to be addressed. Regardless of the season, always feel free to call and contact Public Works regarding concerns with city-owned drainage features that might be in need of cleaning or repair to function as they should. In addition, the city recommends that every property owner take measures to ensure that the ground surrounding their homes and other buildings is sloping away from the structures, and all roadside ditches and drainage easements are clear of debris and vegetation that could clog the drainage system. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. I don't believe there's anyone here this evening to address the council. So we'll go ahead and move on then to approval of the minutes of the work session of July 13th, 2021, and regular meeting of July 20th, 2021. Council?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Narin made the motion, and councilmember Matthews seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. And we go into unfinished business. First up tonight is ordinance number 702, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Article II, Definitions, Section 201, General Lot Line Front, second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor, for all the next three ordinances confirmed with Mr. Ellis, our community development director today, we received no comments. And so he is present if you have questions, but other than that, it's same as been presented to council already.
All right. Council, any questions or further discussion? Okay. Just want to note, there's no one in the audience tonight from the public to comment on this, so I'll go ahead and motion that we approve ordinance number 702.
Second.
Okay. Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Please read. Thank you. If you could, please read ordinance number 702 by title only.
Ordinance number 702, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Article II, Definitions, Section 201, General Lot Line Front. Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Item two under unfinished business is ordinance number 703, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Sections 414 R2 Zone, Single Family, Multiple Family Residential, and 415 R3 Zone, Multiple Family Residential. Again, second and final reading. And Mr. Corbin, any, anything brought into the planning and zoning office?
Nothing for this one or the next one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council, any?
I move to approve ordinance number 703.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Henry made the motion. Councilmember Wildon seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Please read ordinance number 703 by title only.
Ordinance number 703, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Section 414 R2 Zone, Single Family, Multiple Family Residential, and 415 R3 Zone, Multiple Family Residential. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ordinance number 704, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Section 404, General Provisions L, Outdoor Storage and Junk, and M, Storage and Parking of Mobile Homes. Again, second and final reading. Nothing received. Any comments from council? All right. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 704.
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Narin seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Please read ordinance number 704 by title only.
Ordinance number 704, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Section 404, General Provisions L, Outdoor Storage and Junk, and M, Storage and Parking of Mobile Homes. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next is ordinance number 705, adopting revisions to the city's employee manual, second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor, again, we've received no comments or input, but the acting HR director, Kirsten Lennon, your finance director, is here to answer questions, or myself.
All right. Any questions from council? No? Okay. Again, no one's busted down the door from the public to address us on this issue, so any?
I move to approve ordinance number 705.
Second.
All right. So councilmember Narin made the motion. Councilmember Kurat seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
No.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Please read ordinance number 705 by title, excuse me, title only.
Ordinance number 705, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting by reference the document entitled City of Cottonwood Employee Manual, 2007 Edition, Revision Number Two. Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. All right. Council, up next is consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen saw requests. We have three items tonight under consent. First is cooperative use of Yavapai County Contract Number 2018-042A2 with Colibrin for Plans Examiner and Related Services. Item two, application for extension of premises patio liquor license permit submitted by Tamara Morkan for that brewery located at 300 East Cherry Street, Building B, for an event scheduled for September 17th and 18th, 2021. Item three is approval and acceptance of an airport coronavirus response grant in the amount of $13,000. Is there any item that a council member would like to have pulled? All right. I'll go ahead and motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's approved. And we go into new business then, and there's just one item tonight under new business, which is recommendation, consideration, and award of fiscal year 2021 to 2022 community agency grants.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Jeff Cook, the Contract and Purchasing Administrator for the city. It looks like we've got one side going tonight, so I'll take that compared to last time. That's a win for me with the technology, so. Tonight, we'll be going over the outside agency funding program. And just a brief overview of tonight's presentation. We'll go over some adjustments we made to the program, the changes with the scoring criteria, proposals received, our recommendations to the council for award, and summary of programs funded by those recommendations. And so after a work session with council, staff had direction to make a few adjustments to the program with a little bit of a new direction. And so we've got some of those outlined up here and how it was made. Guided by that direction, we adjusted to award bonus points for collaborative proposals. And that was in an effort really to try and avoid some of the redundancy that we were seeing in applications. And the mechanism for doing that, we came up with just a bonus point criteria. If two agencies teamed up and submitted an application, that was worth five points, and I'll go into that later. There was also an overarching emphasis on awarding funds to programs that would help our most vulnerable populations. And then, of course, we allocated an additional $50,000 to the program for a total of $150,000 available. One item not listed on here, we also gave feedback, so we had a pre-application process. We invited the applicants in, just had an open dialogue, and talked to them, asked them if they had any questions, anything that they needed to help them submit a good application. That was heading in the direction we were looking for. And so the scoring criteria didn't change much, but I have two areas in red that did change. In order to create the additional points for the collaborative application that I talked about, we just reduced line item two up there by five points rather than being 15. The applicant's ability to document and state a community need was scored at 10 total points. 14 applications were received, just under $295,000 were requested under this program, and the budget was 150, so almost doubled the request for the allocation of 150,000 This, this screen is our cumulative matrix, and I know there were questions last year regarding the, the scoring and how that works, so I think I'll just dive into that a little bit. We had senior-level staff members of the city on the evaluation committee who get the proposals and score them based on the criteria we just went over individually to come up with these cumulative scores that we see down the right-hand side here. And then we meet as a group. No funding allocations or dollars are decided at that time, and really hash things out, discuss applications, and try to drill down on specific areas of each application if we can to award appropriate dollar values. So while that is up there, I'll just kind of go through a summary of what's being funded by our recommendations tonight. We had a tie for first place. The Verde Valley Homeless Coalition and Cyclist Coalition came in tied as far as the cumulative points are concerned. The homeless coalition had a very specific ask for computers used to help homeless apply for jobs. They asked for four desktop computers and monitors, a printer, and the associated licenses, tech support, and protection plans. Their request was $5,200, and the recommendation tonight is for the full amount. The tied with them was the Cyclist Coalition, and the proposed program was for funding, was to augment Forest Service funding for Phase Three of the Blowout Wash Trail System. And the awarded funds will be matched and used to employ crews to construct nine miles of the new Copper Chief Trail. They requested $15,000, and tonight's recommendation is for that full amount. Rank two was Manzanita Outreach. This year's proposed program was to launch and support their MO PAX program, who they felt was supporting a very vulnerable group of people in our community who they identified as our children. And so this program would provide children with access to free weekly food packs that have children-focused foods, as well as an appropriate book. And it's estimated that 80% of these MO PAX would go to City of Cottonwood residents. The funding requested was $22,380, and tonight's recommendation is for that full amount as Rank three was Verde Valley Wheel Fund. Their proposed program was to fund a certified coach for the mountain bike club at, for middle school students at Mountain View Prep. It's for the fall season. And this group is currently also finishing a mountain bike skills park at MVP, which will soon be open to the public. $3,125 requested, and tonight's recommendation is for that full amount as well. Rank five was the Verde Valley Senior Center. We're all familiar with the Meals on Wheels program, a very vulnerable population for the homebound senior citizens. Over 40% of the Meals on Wheels are delivered to the city of Cottonwood, and of course, they have the commissary, which is in the city as well. $65,000 was requested. Tonight's recommendation is for $45,000. Rank six was Verde Valley Caregivers Coalition.
Mr. Cook, I think you're passing one up.
Did I skip one? Where did I skip Friends? Oh, I missed Friends of the Verde there. Okay. Can I? Where are those? I'm sorry. I apologize. Friends of the Verde. After the Senior Center. Okay. So Friends of the Verde River. And now I'm going to go based on memory, because apparently I didn't prepare my notes for them, but I do know what they were proposing. They teamed with the Science Vortex for the BioBlitz. And so that program was funded last year as well. I think we had an overview at the recent work session and presentation on how that was going. So this was just in support of a collaborative approach between those entities to further that program. Their, their ask was for $10,000, and the recommendation tonight is $6,000. Okay. Now we're on to Verde Valley Caregivers Coalition. This allocation would support a demand-response transportation program that goes above and beyond the limitations of an ADA paratransit program. So direct assistance from riders from out of home into the vehicle, assistance from the vehicle into the store, back into the vehicle, and then back to their residence. So it's above and beyond. It also includes trips out of town for specialty healthcare services. And the requested amount was $20,000. Tonight's recommendation is $10,000. Next is the Old Town Associate? Old Town Association? Sorry. And so the proposed program was to improve and enhance the streetscape of Old Town. Of course, they want to continue to revitalize and promote Cottonwood's historic downtown area as a destination. The ask was for historic marker plaques on buildings, banners, and flower baskets on Main Street light poles. The request also included benches. However, it was determined that there's already a city budget for some of that, and so that was considered by the group as we were looking at the request versus the amount allocated. $20,000 was requested. $6,295 is tonight's recommendation. Next was Steps to Recovery Homes. They're continuing to provide financial support for job development and wellness services to clients throughout the duration of their program dealing with substance abuse. Their goal is to reduce the financial stress for those clients who continue to move forward in their recovery, and also help increase the employment rates in the Verde Valley. $20,000 was requested. Tonight's recommendation is for $17,000. Next is the Old Town Mission. Their proposal included two components if it were fully funded. $15,000 toward maintaining current services and $20,000 specifically to be used for the renovation of the facility to include their showers, restroom, and multipurpose room flooring. This recommendation isn't, we're not designating what the funds must be used for. It could be a combination of each of those, general ops or the renovation. They have the Homeless Resource Center, Vision Clinic, Legal Counsel, and other great things. The, the funding requested was $35,000 total. Tonight's recommendation is for $15,000. And lastly is the Sisterhood Connection Foundation. The proposal included an allocation for a program called Sheila's Sunflower Program. It's designed for at-risk homeless students in our community. The full amount of $20,000 requested would have provided financial aid to nearly 100 homeless students who are in need of school supplies, food assistance, and medical needs. The proposed funding amount of $5,000 wouldn't cover everything, but can provide a match of what Cottonwood Oak Creek School District receives annually to help provide school supplies and food assistance for these students. And so in summary, the recommended funding amounts will allow the city to fund 11 of 14 applicants. This is the highest percentage of applicants that will receive some type of funding since we started this program a few years ago. And I think the council should be proud. That's largely in part to the additional funding allocated to the program. Also, something to mention, there were several asks that were fully funded, and usually it's only one or maybe two. We were able to do a handful this time, and that was also due to the additional funding allocated. So that was nice to see. due to the additional funding allocated. So that was nice to see. And with that, that really concludes my presentation. I'm open for any comments or questions.
All right. Counsel comments, questions? I have a, a couple of questions. First, was, how was the attendance at the pre-meeting when you kind of explained the process and answered questions?
We had a decent turnout. Some of the people that attended didn't end up submitting or just were gaining more information about the project. Out of this group, I don't have an exact number, but I want to say four or five of the entities were represented probably at that meeting.
Okay. And then, do we do any kind of follow-up afterwards to let them know how they could improve, or just answer questions if they're curious?
We do. So the letters that went out to the agencies this year with the results included the fact that we'll reach out after these recommendations are finalized with a debrief, how they can improve, what the committee was looking at. And we encourage them to apply again, because a few on this list have applied and not received funding. And then here they are. They've kind of learned what we're looking for, and now they're receiving funding. So a few good success stories there.
Great. Okay. And then, were the only two agencies that collaborated on a joint application, the Friends and the Science Vortex? Or were there others that?
The Friends, the Science Vortex, and the Verde Valley Humane Society were probably the three that had a really clean and clear collaboration. The others mixed some components, so there were some partial points awarded, not the full five or zero, somewhere in between. But there were, there were two of the three. The Humane Society partnered actually with Manzanita Outreach for a pet food distribution program. And it was just determined that that probably wasn't meeting our overarching goal of the most vulnerable populations.
Got it. Okay. All right. Counsel on the other? Go ahead.
One quick question. After the, the groups have found out how much they potentially are going to receive, has anybody come back and, and mentioned anything pro or con to that?
To response back?
Yes.
Yeah, we had a few emails back. Obviously, you know, thanks for the opportunity. We're obviously disappointed, but we're going to continue to do what we do best, and we look forward to a debrief.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, counsel? I'm pleased to see that we could bolster this fund, you know, by an additional 50. I think it's great that we're able to support a really wide range of, of agencies and needs in our communities. So all in all, I think this program's been a success. And I know that not everybody gets the full funding that they're requesting. We're, we're just able to meet half of the, the value of what people are requesting out there, but we're certainly doing our best. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, that's it. Do, do we need to approve that by motion? No. I'm so sorry. I'm glad you're here to keep an eye on me. Would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve the, do I have to list every single one out, or can I say the, okay. I move to approve the funding amounts that are listed in the council packet for the fiscal year 2022 outside agency funding program, subject to approval of the final form of the respective funding agreements by the city attorney. Second.
Councilmember Henry made the motion. Councilmember Narin seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right. I'll motion to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Mayor made the motion. Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
And I would move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, counsel.